Regular city council meeting of May 2, 2013. The time is now 8:40 PM. And in accordance with our agenda, I believe, we are at item number five, which is council reports. The purpose is to allow individual council members to report on meetings, events, training opportunities, and other activities that they have recently participated in. And I will call upon council members in alphabetical order to determine if there is anything they wish to report, starting on my right, Ms. Bolton.
I have two things to report, and I'm not sure if anyone else is planning on reporting on either the Southern Colorado I-25 Eco Development Meeting yesterday, or if someone else is planning to cover the Downtown Colorado Inc. meetings that occurred in late April.
Nada. Anybody else?
Go for it.
Go for it.
Thursday and Friday, April 25th and 26th, I attended sessions presented here in Trinidad by Downtown Colorado Inc. Thursday's emphasis was on urban renewal practitioner strategy with discussions covering urban renewal authorities, business improvement districts, downtown development authorities, and tax improvement financing. This session was also attended by specialists in these areas from around the state and also personnel from the State Historical Society. Friday's emphasis was on laying the foundation for downtown design. Speakers focused on engaging young stakeholders, creative industries, and small businesses in downtown design. Both sessions were well-attended and provided much good information on retransformation. And just yesterday, I, with several of the other council members, attended the first session of the Southern Colorado I-25 Eco Development Meeting at Mount Carmel. This is a regional business alliance being formed between the cities of Trinidad, Pueblo, and Colorado Springs to focus on how to capture and harvest tourists off the interstate to enjoy our rich history and further promote cross-merchandising between all three cities.
Thank you. That's very informative. Mr. Schu.
No, I don't have anything.
You ever have nothing for the cause? How about you, Mr. Matei?
No, I do not thank you.
Mr. Bonato.
I do have one thing, Madam Mayor, is that I'd just like to inform the public that we met last Tuesday at the Perry Stare Senior Citizen. And I'd just like to take this time to thank Mrs. Rizley and Mrs. Sandoval for all their hard work and their warm reception that they had toward the council. I mean, we had a great lunch. It was a very informative meeting. There was, I'd say, what would you say, about maybe thirty to thirty-five?
Oh, it's a little more.
Maybe more than that of the senior citizens that attended at the Stare Senior Citizen Hall. And I do have to admit, they did throw a lot of hard questions to us. And I believe the council and the mayor and Mr. Akers and Mrs. Wilson that attended with us gave them pretty good answers. So it was a good meeting. I look forward with Michelle to getting another meeting going. But our senior citizens, I think, really come first in our life because they, as we looked upon them, they told stories about how this town was made. So I think it's very important that we put them at the beginning of a lot of our problems and see if we can solve them. So once again, Mrs. Rizley, Mrs. Sandoval, and the board of the senior citizens, I'd just like to say thank you for having us.
Thank you for that reminder. Nice. Ms. Velasquez.
I don't have any. He said it all.
Yeah. I also attended the I-25 Summit. Kelly gave an excellent summary of it. One thing that I was very excited about was the attendance from Pueblo and Springs. It was very high-level, presidential council.
Yes.
And there was also discussion, I mean, who knows if it ever happened, actually, the Springs council representatives, they said, why don't we rename Colorado Springs Municipal Airport to be the Southern Colorado Regional Airport? And that's all part of the branding of Southern Colorado. I thought that was very exciting.
And they also formed an actual committee, all this, to continue moving this forward. So it's not going to be just a one-time meeting.
And actual council members from Springs and Pueblo that attended, you know, they were very, very.
They were very positive. Very positive. This is all underscoring. I congratulate all members of council and the city for doing that outreach, for attempting to collaborate and get involved with other entities throughout the state. I just want to remind folks about two really important events, well, actually, four. TSJC will have its graduation exercise this Friday at 10:00 AM. And I think I had sent to all council members a copy of an email that I received. And I do plan to attend that ceremony, and I'd encourage anybody else who has time and can make it to please participate and show our support for TSJC. Yeah. This Friday, the 10th. And I also want to encourage everyone, since this is the year of the annual of the Ludlow Memorial, to see if they can attend the special production that SCRT is going to put on called "American Story." And I've already bought my tickets for that. I believe that's also this Friday.
Yeah, can you plug some?
Well, no, sir. It's in the evening. I think it's an evening. Yeah, it's an evening production. So I'm going to do two things. And then this Saturday, we do have a conflict. There's the wonderful Chinawith Award banquet, and that will recognize outstanding business leaders in the community. And the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce is also having a banquet that same evening. Both of these occur on May 11. And I would encourage my colleagues on council to participate in one or more of those activities if they're able to do so. Thank you. Next order of business is Agenda Item 6. And here's where we get good information, reports by the city manager and the city attorney. Mr. Aker, whenever you're ready, sir.
I will try to be real brief. It's been a while since we had a meeting. It seems like several weeks since the last time I gave an update on this. Just a couple of meetings that I've gone to. I went up to the Denver Governor's Executive Order signing on Ludlow, went up with Mr. Matei and several other folks in the community. But while I was up there, I was also able to talk to Sam Mohammed at CML. He sends his regards. He is going to come down and make a visit sometime in June and July.
Very good.
And then that following Monday, I attended the partnership workshop that the Special District Association, the school districts are having across the state. I think learned some other examples of the way some people are working together. I think we're thinking the right things. Actually surprised some people when they saw me. They thought I was lost because it was in Ludlow. And then I tied that with a couple of meetings with some energy service companies, Trane and Siemens. I've been, as you know, I've been talking about in the future, and going to start working with the Governor's Energy Office on an RFP process so that we can start looking at our city facilities. So I took that opportunity to meet with them while I was up in the Denver area. We had the Trident Energy Workshop, was a couple of days later. Unfortunately, it wasn't very well-intended, but I think hopefully it planted some seeds in some folks' minds. And then on the 25th, I went up, was invited to go to what was called a listening session at Fort Carson. And what that was is they invited people from Colorado Springs, Fountain, El Paso County to kind of hear what they had heard as a part of their environmental impact assessment for the potential to either do some changings about losing a brigade or maybe gaining another group of men at Fort Carson and what that could mean. They had the other entities, and I thought it was interesting, it's the first time I've gone to a meeting like that, was all the support and all the different activities that the Fort Carson was involved in up in the northern area. And I think we're just now beginning to have the dialogues down here in the southern portion as it relates to Pining Canyon, and I think trying to increase their contribution to the community when they do come down. They could either lose 3,000, gain 3,000 people or lose 8,000 people. They don't know yet, latest round. And then I, too, attended off and on some of the meetings at the end of the month. My main focus was meeting with the Main Street Program Coordinator through DOLA. Since we have gone through the assessment, are going into that process, that report should be coming out shortly. I'm not going to say when now because I thought it would have been out by now. They just now got to address it in comments. But in the June-July timeframe, we'll be getting more information as far as do we want to join the Main Street Program and what its impact and what its benefits could be to the community. I was contacted by the school district today. I'm going to be meeting with the superintendent they wanted to inquire if the city's had any interest in the administration building. The police chief has expressed some interest, but I don't know any details as far as what the district's looking at doing. Can we even afford looking at it? But I think we're looking at, was there a way that we can partner with them to where they don't have to maintain that budget and maybe we can get some use out of it. I'm working with Rick Klein and LaHunta to try to set up a meeting to go talk to CDOT about the Southwest Cheat and getting them to start paying more attention to funding potentials. And then wanted to let you know that I'm going to start finance director interviews. Going to do the first interview Saturday. A person can't make it during the week. And then follow with two final interviews on the 13th. And hopefully make a decision by the end of the week and get someone on board in the June timeframe. And meanwhile, I've already started talking with Anna and with Rosie about going ahead and getting the budget process started because I think we've got enough information to get it started, even as the audit is continuing.
Okay.
And next week, I'll provide you some financial updates. I need to get into the pack of this plan. Just two reminders I put, sent out, and I think is at your place, the CML outreach is coming up. There's several in this region. I'm planning on attending the one on May 23rd in Rocky Ford. If anyone's interested, I can take, if they want to come with me, I'll be glad to play a chauffeur. But I'd make you sit in the front seat if you're the only one. And then Action 22 is the Governor's State of the State. That is up in Pueblo. I think the cost if we pre-register is about $40. I think that would be well worth having that involvement as well. And then, not lastly, I was invited to read a book at the library, and my book is "Duck on a Bike." I'm supposed to practice my quacking. I think the years got.
I could quack.
I don't know. I asked Michelle Blake at the library to invite any other council members that might want to join me.
She did invite me, but my time schedule conflicted with, or her time schedule for me conflicted with a dental appointment at the same time.
I'd rather be quacking. And then two other updates, building-related. I got a phone, I actually called Bill Barnes today. He's the engineer that's been represented with white groups that's been looking at the Opera House. He did update me that the insurance adjuster did come out last week. They don't have the results yet, but he promised to share those with me when he gets there as far as what they're looking at, next steps with that building. And then the Denver, the Downtown Motel, as a part of our package for the next week, Chris, Kelly, and Les and I have spoken. And I think we'll wrap that discussion as far as some options that we see for them in that discussion next week. We've been talking with them as well, and we'll give them some updates as part of that as well. So that's all that I've got for the.
Any questions from council? And Mr. Lasz.
Thank you.
And the microphone to you.
Yeah, really. I'm going to go from alcohol to marijuana. Who knew the big city attorney would be so much fun? No, seriously, the legislative session ends tomorrow. And so, like I said in an email to you guys, sorry you don't get those, Councilman Schu, but I'll let you know as soon as the legislative session concludes and whatever happens. There was an article in The Chieftain today that was suggesting that they're really having difficulty in passing the marijuana legislation, especially the taxing bill. And it's still out there, that they're talking about a 15% excise tax, 15% sales tax, and those would be together, of course. So it would be a total of up to 30%. And that's not palatable for a lot of people, understandably. So we'll see what happens by the end of the legislative session. And that's all I really have on that. To echo what Tom said, and that is, as we were furiously dealing with going through the code and the statutes on nuisance abatement and what, you know, what you are going to do on these dilapidated buildings, of course, we then had problems with the building adjacent to right next door to First National Bank. So that situation, of course, just kind of got worse. But at least in that situation, we do have a very active property owner, and we will be reporting to you, as was indicated by Mr. Aker, the work session that we have next Tuesday. And then I also sent you a memo on a number of other things, including my, what is going to be my letter to Dixon Waller as our auditors about the pending litigation and matters that could become litigation. Without going into any details on that, I explained all that to you. And the good news is, there's a lot less, with ARPA, you know, ARPA notwithstanding, there's a lot less actual or potential litigation this year than there was last year. But there is ARPA. So in any event, that's all I have, and if you have any questions, I may.
Any questions from council? Thank you. Our next agenda item is unfinished business, and that's Agenda Item 7A. Excuse me, a hotel and restaurant liquor license renewal request by Fisher's Peak Lodging LLC, doing business as Trinidad Holiday Inn/Peaks Restaurant and Lounge at 3130 Santa Fe Trail Drive. Is there a representative from the establishment present in the audience?
Yes.
Could I have you come forward and identify yourselves, please? I think if I, Victoria and Melita? Did I get the first names correct? Okay, thank you. Victoria, please identify yourself.
I'm Natalia.
I'm Natalia.
Oh, Natalita, I'm sorry. And, you know, I'd like to give you an opportunity to make any comments that you care to make to council. You don't have to, but I always give everybody an opportunity to speak. And if everything is in order, I will entertain a motion to renew the hotel and restaurant liquor license for Fisher's Peak Lodging LLC, doing business as Trinidad Holiday Inn/Peaks Restaurant and Lounge at 3130 Santa Fe Trail Drive. So move the motion? Motion by Mr. Schu.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bonato. Any discussion or questions?
Yes, I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Has the, are you all settled with the State of Colorado on the violation?
Yes.
Between taking corrective actions to make sure.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? I think we're ready for the roll call. Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Velasquez?
Yes.
Dr. Gonzalez? Yes. Thank you for coming. We're sorry we made you wait so long. All right, thank you. The next agenda item is 8A, to consider approval of a 3.2 beer retail off-premises renewal request by Safeway Stores Incorporated, doing business as Safeway Store #722, located at 457 West Main Street. And is there a representative from the establishment in the audience? Oh, my heavens. We don't, we will have to table this matter.
I put in a call specifically and spoke with someone at State of Rex from Safeway.
Okay.
He was aware that he needed to be here.
I know another assistant manager also in Safeway. Perhaps we could talk to her. Just kidding.
What, table, did you need an option for the chair fire inspection for what the significance is?
There was indication that a second inspection was done and everything had been taken care of.
No, I'm sorry. This is Chris Kelly.
Yes.
They had the same insurance, fire and building inspection. They had the same insurance, but the fire inspection passed.
May I have a motion to table item 8A?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Bolton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Miles. And any discussion? And we're ready for the roll call. Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Velasquez?
All of state.
Dr. Gonzalez? Yes. Thank you. The next agenda item is 8B, and that is to consider a special events permit request malt, vinous, and spiritus by the Trinidad Area Arts Council at 130 East Main Street for an event to occur on May 18, 2013. Is a representative from TAAC present? Yes, good old, I recognize you. Could you come forward and identify yourself for the record? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm Michelle Bell. I'm your president of the Trinidad Area Arts Council.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about this event on May 18?
We are holding a fundraiser. As you all know, we're a nonprofit organization, and we function primarily on our membership's fundraisers, grants. What we're going to hold is, we're calling it the May Martini Madness Night.
What was that week?
May Martini Madness. We're going to be holding silent auctions, chance tickets, and we're also be unveiling a substantial art piece from a very beloved artist.
Very wonderful.
We've already held classes where we've painted martini glasses, and this is going to be part of the fundraiser.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah, we're going to sell the glasses, a couple of martini, hence the martini madness.
Excellent. If everything is in order, I will entertain a motion to approve the special events permit request. Motion by Ms. Miles.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matei. Any discussion or questions? And we're ready for the roll call. Bolton?
Stain.
Bonato?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Velasquez?
Yes.
Dr. Gonzalez? Yes. And you be sure and get ahold of me about contributing something to that silent auction. The next agenda item, under miscellaneous business, is Agenda Item 8C, and that is a new tavern liquor license request by RGS Sawaya LLC, doing business as Cafe What a Grind at 341 North Commercial. And I see Mr. Richard Buzz Sawaya in the audience. Would you come forward and just identify yourself for the record?
Richard Sawaya?
Welcome. Mr. Downs, do you have any comments or information for staff on this item?
Madam Mayor, council, this is indicated on the communication, the council communication. It is a matter on your agenda this evening to consider setting the public hearing date and also setting a tentative neighborhood boundary. Of course, I believe as we have done, as you have done with historic precedent, that would be the city limits exactly. And then just please, setting the public hearing date.
Before we do that, though, can you tell us a little bit about the changes at your restaurant?
Well, we have just put in a brand-new kitchen.
Oh, wonderful.
And we've done a lot of remodeling there. We've done quite a bit of changes in there. We put in lock-in cooler.
Excellent.
We've done a lot of switching around. If you've been in the restaurant, you've found that the coffee area is now in the front. We are moving things. We have furniture, new furniture coming in. Some of it is there, some of it has not arrived yet. There is a bar being built by Barry White that'll be put in, in the back end. And we were just, you know, we were kind of forced to open up earlier because of the customers wanting their coffee and stuff like that, so we kind of opened up a little earlier than we wanted to because half the stuff wasn't completed yet. But if you've been in there, it has changed quite a bit.
Substantially.
Yes.
Tell us the most important thing about changes in the menu. Are you going to be offering dinner service?
Yes.
Yay!
That's one of the reasons we're asking for a liquor license.
Okay.
Because last, when we used to serve up into that time, people would come in asking for a drink before dinner, and a lot of them would just walk out.
Oh, my.
If they didn't have, you know, a drink before dinner or, you know, something like that. So we considered getting the liquor license, and that's one of the reasons we're applying for the liquor license.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of council? And just for the record, the typical proposed neighborhood boundary to be considered is the city limits?
Yes, ma'am.
And what date should be selected for the public hearing?
It has to be outside 30 days.
Outside?
I don't mean to interrupt, but it has to be all 30 days.
June 18th is the earliest.
Does anybody have a problem with our selecting June 18th? All righty. Therefore, I will entertain a motion to set a public hearing for a new tavern liquor license request by RGS Sawaya LLC, doing business as Cafe What a Grind at 341 North Commercial Street. Boundaries to be the city limits of the city of Trinidad, and the hearing to occur on June 18, 2013.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Bolton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schu. Any discussion or questions? And seeing none, we're ready for the roll call. Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Velasquez?
Yes.
Dr. Gonzalez? Yes. Thank you, and sorry we kept you waiting so long. The next agenda item is 8D, and that's consideration of water rights lease and revegetation agreement with Albert Anthony and Phyllis E. Blasey. And Mr. Fernandez, bless your heart, we're making you wait a long time, but I think this is your baby.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, there are no changes from the presentation at our work session. It's a very basic agreement that allows Mr. Blasey to continue use of the water to grow a crop that is non-root-seeking. And upon, once that crop is established, we would then, and he's agreed, to dry up the land, and we will transfer those water rights to Trinidad. And he's already signed on the agreement, so ladies proceed.
May, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I don't mean to keep chiming in on everything.
No, that's fine.
Councilwoman Miles raised some questions at the work session about, like Jeff Khan and the date of the water agreement.
Oh, yes, I recall that, yes.
And I just want to let you know, I spoke to Mr. Khan, and he told me two things. He said, one is, if there were 25 items on an agenda for water issues for the city of Trinidad, this would be number 25. He also said the reason it's done like that is because that's the water year. And so I don't know why it wasn't, you know, why we don't have it kind of automatically surface on the agenda. I don't mean to, you know, but anyway, so it's just the water year. That's why it was dated back to November of 2012.
Thank you, Mr. Schu.
Yes, ma'am.
Any discussion or questions? And seeing none, I think we're ready for the roll call.
I think we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to head myself.
I'd move for approval of the water rights lease and revegetation agreement with Albert Anthony Blasey and Phyllis E. Blasey.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton, for keeping me on track. And second by Mr. Bonato. Now we can discuss and ask questions, and if there are none, then we can go to the roll call. We're ready. Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
This is the similar agreement to last year's agreement that we had with the Chamber of Commerce considering the, in consideration for use, having someone sell concessions at the Triggers baseball game at the Central Park Ball Field. This year, it would be with the Creative...
Creative Sales.
Creative Sales, Inc. And we did seek other, we've advertised to see if there's any other interested parties. I had one person talk with me, however, given the expenses and what he saw would be needed, he declined to propose on it. The Triggers through Creative Sale, Inc. have stepped up to take the concession. What they are planning on doing is having some local vendors sell the food. They're looking at hot dogs and another cart, and then also to bring in periodic fundraisers for nonprofits. For that reason, and the consideration as far as what the city should get out of this, last year it was an amount of $10. I've left it at that this year, but with the caveat that we could take a look at the end of the season to see if we need to have any adjustments. I think by using some local vendors, giving them an opportunity to increase their business and offering some fundraisers for some groups like band or any other booster clubs, I think we're giving back to the community.
Thank you. If everything is in... Oh, I think we need to do the motion. Yeah, yeah. If everything is in order, I will entertain a motion to approve the facility use and concessionaire's license agreement with Creative Sale Incorporated to use the grandstands at Central Park.
Madam Mayor, I could, I got a motion, but if I could interrupt you one minute on the, before we take a motion. To me, looking at F on the miscellaneous business and E, I think we ought to, we ought to consider, maybe I'm late in asking you this, but we ought to consider F before we discuss about the consideration of facility use and concessionaire leasing agreement for the grandstands. I believe that F is, has some kind of supportive deal that there'd be questions on before we can make a motion or agreement on E. In other words, I think F should be where place E and E and replace the F as far as...
You know, I saw that too, and the way I understood it was it had to be in this order because you cannot transfer a license to someone that doesn't have possession of the premises. So you have to do the premises first and then the license.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Downs?
It is, Madam Mayor, that is correct. That's why I was standing.
That was just a question I...
Yes, sir.
So may I have a motion? Okay, motion by Ms. Velazquez. Second?
Second.
By Ms. Bolton. Now we can talk about this issue.
I just have one comment. You know, this is a concession. I don't think people are going to get hurt, but they can, because there may be sharp instruments and so forth. I just want to make sure that we enforce the insurance provision here because I would expect the LLC is not going to have, you know, the custody of the good.
We will do that. And also, Mr. Andrew Dunn with the Triggers and Warren McDonald from the Chamber are here because there's going to be a transfer of license, so if you have any questions for the council to respond to.
Madam Mayor, if I can...
Yes, Mr. Benado.
As I look at this, and I'm trying to debate, and I asked Audra here in her break time, and she kind of explained what deal was with Creative Sales. And I'm still kind of lost on, I don't know if I should jump to F at this time, but before I consider this recommendation on E, is that I don't know how the Trinidad-Los Angeles County Chamber of Commerce could transfer a license to Creative Sales. I mean, Audra tried to explain it to me, and I'm still kind of lost on that. And I know Mr. Downs can't answer this question because he sits on the board of the Chamber, so I would like to have a little bit of another explanation, or maybe Audra could come back and give me that information a little bit better. Can I...
Let me just share with you that I did ask Mr. Aker if he could make an inquiry to Tammy Tenoy or call up Municipal League because there is, you know, possible perceived conflict since Mr. Downs is on the Chamber Board, and I think it was just due to the press of work today that they didn't get a reply back.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I did.
Oh, you did?
In like twenty after four, I did, and I don't mean to interrupt you, if you want to hear that now.
Oh, no, no, no.
Ms. Tenoy told me that, but I'm trying to think of all the things she told me, but she did say that I should just not say anything, and you should have Mr. Aker, you know, do the presentation. And that the transfer of a liquor license, and I don't know that I can answer your questions, Councilman Benado, but that it is, it is appropriate to do, I mean, it's okay to do. You have a liquor license for the premises, and it is going from one organization as the responsible organization at the premises to another. And I, I know there were a number of other concerns that you had, Councilman Benado, like Creative Sale having a different address that's common, the Chamber did also, I mean, a different address from the licensed premises, but it's quite common to do that. And anyway, it's simply something that happens, and that is the responsible organization. In this case, for the Triggers, would be the ones that would hold the liquor license. So, no, excuse me, I'm done, sir.
So who would be responsible, like Michelle's question there, who would be responsible if something would happen as far as somebody getting hurt or something like that?
Well, that would be, I mean, pursuant to all the agreements that you have with Creative Sale and ensuring that they do everything that would have been required of the Chamber last year, all the insurance policies that would be in place, and everything that you would have and that you would require, you know, the license holder or anyone else running the business there to have their insurance policies.
And that's why I asked them to make sure they're there.
Right.
We don't find out after the first, that they think that's insurance.
And is it, I don't know if you could answer this question for me either, if you have a, if you have an out-of-state gentleman like this Mr. Dunn or whoever it is, is it legal to have somebody from out-of-state apply for this liquor license?
It is, as long as they, as long as they, you know, pass the background check and you have...
It's actually even done like with the Holiday Inn.
With Safeway?
Safeway.
Really?
Yes.
Absolutely. It's quite common, again, as long as you have all the contact information and they pass the background checks, and I'm sure those are probably pending as well, like all the background checks for this evening, but it is. And, you know, I'm not trying to assuage your concerns, Councilman Benado, I'm just telling you kind of how it is, and it's common practice, and that is how it's done, so...
So this, so this address that we have here at 700 Smith Street, would that be the address of which the liquor license is going to be showing?
Yes, sir.
That's the ballpark.
It is.
The city owns the ballpark. How could, how could Creative Sales have an address there within or out of an office and nothing there?
They have a lease.
Yeah, at the grandstand.
That's, that's...
It's where the license premises is, and you have to have an address.
So they would have to display the license at the place where sale of alcohol is occurring, whenever they're doing it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Sorry.
Which is the ballpark.
Okay, bye.
Are there any other questions?
That's enough for me tonight.
I believe we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yeah.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Back again, Downs.
Yes. The next agenda item is eight F, and that is to consider transfer of ownership of a 3.2 beer retail on-premises license request by Creative Sale Incorporated at 700 Smith Street, formerly held by Trinidad and Los Anamos County Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Downs, is there anything that you can comment about this, or perhaps Mr. Aker?
I think it would probably be best directed to Mr. Aker, but if I can, you know, add anything, please just let me know.
Okay, Mr. Aker?
This is the actual transfer of ownership of that liquor license from the Chamber of Commerce to Creative Sales, Inc. So they can, they will be taking over the liquor license at, once this is approved by City Council.
And Audra, did they apply for the transfer in a timely manner so that it is appropriate that they can do a transfer instead of having to apply for anyone?
When is it currently expired?
On April 23rd, in that year. They submitted all documents, and the only thing that was pending was, is the lease. That's what was pending. We had the same exact situation with the Chamber last year. We had to go back-to-back basically in order to get it until we council board.
So we can transfer a license after it's expired?
No.
No. He submitted everything, and it was pending approval of this license, you couldn't get that lease.
So he did apply in a ti... I just want to make sure that we're legal and kosher. Yes?
One more question on this document checklist. What I don't see is background checks. And I thought that was something...
Do you have to do that with a transfer? Yes?
You do.
Number three, four, five, six, seven aren't checked?
That's right. And the reason that you don't have those evening is you're not considering that at the council this evening. All you're doing is setting this for the...
Oh, serving the hearing, that's right. Okay.
You had me worried for a second there.
Yes, okay.
It's my job.
It's, you do it well.
So we have to set a hearing date? That's really the action that we're taking tonight. Do you have a proposed hearing date?
For a transfer, it can be as early as the next regular meeting, it can be thirty days out. It's a lot more discretionary than a new license.
Mr. Aker, do you have...
Also, we're having a problem with getting fingerprints back even within the thirty days.
Yeah.
So we're outside of the thirty days. It'll have to just, again, be contingent on that respect.
I think if council is okay with it being contingent on the background, we could do it as early as the fourteenth of June.
Fourteenth?
Fourteenth of May.
Fourteenth?
Twenty-first of May, sorry. Twenty-first of June.
May 21, 2013?
So if they don't get their fingerprints, they can't sell beer?
Well, we'll do, well...
We'll do...
I'm sorry.
We'll do what we did with the two prior applications.
Yes.
And they've also filed for a temporary permit.
But they have to get their fingerprints before they can sell beer.
No.
No, that was...
No, the question was, is it, as long as the state issues it, and the state won't ensure without the fingerprints.
But they have a temporary permit.
Can they get a temporary?
They're seeking a temporary permit. Council can grant them the temporary.
That's where I'm going, I know they need a temporary...
And fingerprints, okay, so say the fingerprints come back and there's something that sends a red flag.
That's our A G.
Council takes action to revoke a license.
Well, they can't do it till the state, and the state won't beat that price.
And that's why we have item 8G, which is going to be the temporary.
The temporary permit.
Okay, so we're, do we have a motion to... Yeah, oh, no, that's all right. Do we have a motion to set a hearing for the transfer of ownership of a 3.2 beer retail on-premises license request by Creative Sales Incorporated at 700 Smith Street, formerly held by the Trinidad and Los Anamos County Chamber of Commerce?
So move.
And that hearing date's going to be May 21, 2013. Motion by Ms. Bolton?
Second.
Second by Ms. Velazquez. Any discussion or questions? And I think we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Back again, Downs.
Yes. And the next agenda item is eight G, and this is a temporary permit request by Creative Sales Incorporated at 700 Smith Street. And Mr. Downs, do you have any information, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Aker, to share with us on this? I keep picking on Mr. Downs, I'm...
This is the last in the series related to Creative Sales. This is the actual granting of a temporary permit request from, for Creative Sales so that they can operate the concession and sell beer while the license transfer is actually going through process.
If everything is in order, I will entertain a motion to grant the temporary permit request by Creative Sales Incorporated at 700 Smith Street.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Matei?
Second.
Second by Ms. Velazquez. Discussion or questions? And seeing none, I think we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Back again, Downs.
Yes. The next agenda item is eight H, and that is consideration of a professional services agreement with AE Design for Monument Lake Fish, Pachory, and Zoo National Register nomination and construction documents. And this matter was presented to us at our last work session. And Ms. Wolf, I believe, do you have any comments on this for us this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, on page two, there was a change made to three B per the council's request to add the county, it's added in three locations, and that will be instituted on an as-needed basis per contract.
I think it was identifying, would you say the place again, please?
Yep. Three B, one and two licenses and permits now include city and or county.
Oh, okay, the, that, thank you, that's probably a little redundant, but good to have.
And then for all city contracts, we've added number five, force majeure.
Okay, yeah, force majeure clause.
Specific one.
Yes.
Down.
Thank you. If everything is in order, I will entertain a motion to approve the agreement with AE Design as presented.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Bolton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shu. Any discussion or questions? And seeing none, I think we're ready for a roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Back again, Downs.
Yes. The next agenda item, and poor Audra, she's going to have to do some reading for this one, is agenda item eight I, which is the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 14, Planning and Zoning Division 11, Zone District Regulations for the Planned Unit Development District, Section 14-74, Conditional Uses, Section 14-76, 4B, and 6, Standards and Design Requirements, Section 14-78, 4, Review and Approval, Section 14-79, Failure to Meet Development Schedule, and Section 14-80, Zoning Review of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Trinidad, Colorado to Provide Greater Flexibility Within the Planned Unit Development Zoning District, and Setting a Hearing Date for Consideration of Said Ordinance. And council may recall that we had some lengthy discussions about this at our last work session. And Ms. Garrett, you are probably going to need a council member to introduce the ordinance. Do I have a volunteer? Ms. Velazquez, and you have a proposed hearing date for us?
May 21?
May 21, 2013. within the planned unit development zoning district and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance. And council may recall that we had some lengthy discussions about this at our last work session. And Ms. Garrett, you are probably going to need a council member to introduce the ordinance. Do I have a volunteer? Ms. Velazquez, and you have a proposed hearing date for us?
May first?
May twenty-one, twenty thirteen. And now Ms. Garrett, take a sip of water and then will you please read aloud the entire ordinance and then we will take action to set a hearing date and consider approval on first reading.
An ordinance amending chapter fourteen, planning and zoning division eleven, zone district regulations for the PUD, planning unit development district, section fourteen dash seventy-four, conditional uses, section fourteen dash seventy-six, sub, four B and six, standards and design requirements, section fourteen dash seventy-eight, subsection four, review and approval, section fourteen dash seventy-nine, failure to meet development schedule and section fourteen dash eighty, zoning review of the code of ordinances of the city of Trinidad, Colorado to provide greater flexibility within the planned unit development zoning district. Whereas planned unit development, PUD zoning, is defined within the Trinidad municipal code of ordinances as development of an area by means of a design technique which allows collectability and navigation in the types of uses and arrangements of facilities in an optimum manner in harmony with adjacent properties. And whereas planned growth and development of a community results in the greatest benefit to its citizens and whereas the city of Trinidad in considering requests for zoning designation must be ever mindful of the potential impacts to neighboring properties and should be allowed to place reasonable conditions and safeguards when considering the same. Now therefore, be or being by the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, that section fourteen dash seventy-four of the code of ordinances of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, hereby repealed and reenacted as follows. Section fourteen dash seventy-four, conditional uses. Unless explicitly specified in an ordinance to establish or revise specific planned unit development, the following uses shall be permitted as conditional uses to be approved separately by the planning commission. One, lodging establishments. Two, commission centers and public gathering spaces. Three, museums, theaters and similar uses. Four, restaurants, taverns and similar uses. Five, all businesses and retail uses that are not permitted by right and not permitted prohibited by the city of Trinidad. Six, churches and schools or other public or other semi-public uses. Seven, wholesaling of products provided storage space does not exceed fifteen hundred square feet. Eight, fabrication or assembling incidental to retail sales from the premises provided that not more than twenty-five percent of the floor area occupied by such businesses is used for manufacturing, processing, assembling, treatment escalation and repair of products. Nine, any kind of scientific research or manufacture, compounding, assembling, processing, fabrication, packaging or treatment of products, manufacturing or processing industries. Ten, mortuary or embalming establishment or school. Eleven, mini warehouses which must be in accordance with section fourteen dash one oh three of division fourteen. Twelve, wireless, telecommunications towers and facilities which must be in accordance with article eight of chapter fourteen. Thirteen, electric substations and gas regulator stations. Fourteen, fire stations, police stations and telephone exchanges. Fifteen, water reservoirs, water storage tanks, water pumping stations and sewerless stations. Section fourteen dash seventy-six, subsection four B and six of the code of ordinances of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, are hereby repealed and reenacted as follows. Section fourteen dash seventy-six, subsection four B and six, standards and design requirements. Four, requirements regarding parks, school sites and other public areas. B, the city council may require additional recreational amenities within the planned unit development district for residents of such districts and may require that up to twenty-five percent of the planned unit development district area be set aside for park, playground, open space, school site or other public use in addition to public streets. Six, circulation. Circulation shall be determined by a review of each planned unit development district. The planned unit development district must have an adequate and engineering internal street circulation system approved by a professional traffic engineer licensed in the state of Colorado. All planned unit development applications must also include a traffic report produced by a professional traffic engineer licensed in the state of Colorado. Public streets must serve all structures and uses within the planned unit development district. However, private roads may be permitted if they meet minimum construction standards, can be used by public safety vehicles for emergency purposes and provided that each structure or use in the planned unit development district is served by off-street loading spaces or service areas. A traffic report produced by a professional traffic engineer licensed in the state of Colorado must accompany all applications. Section fourteen dash seventy-eight, subsection four is hereby repealed and reenacted as follows. Section fourteen dash seventy-eight, review and approval. Four, if a plan is approved, the subject area designated and shown on the official zoning map of the planned unit development district, if it is not already designated as such, and the legal description of the subject area shall be recorded so as to properly advise that the land is subject to a planned unit development district ordinance. Sections fourteen dash seventy-nine and fourteen dash eight is the code of ordinances of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, hereby repealed and reenacted in their entirety as follows. Section fourteen dash seventy-nine, failure to meet development schedule. If the applicant has not begun construction in the planned unit development district within one year after the approval of the final development plan or otherwise has failed to meet the approved development schedule, the planning commissioners shall initiate proceedings to revoke approval for the planned unit development district, except that for good cause shown by the applicant, it may extend the development schedule. Upon the completion of proceedings to revoke approval of the planned unit development, the zoning district applicable before approval of the preliminary plan shall then be in effect. Section fourteen dash eighty, zoning review. At least once every two years, following the approval of a planned unit development district, the planning zoning variance commission shall review all building permits which have been issued for the planned unit development district and shall examine the construction which has taken place on the site. If the commission, commission finds that the rate of construction has not met the approved development program or if there are found to be violations of any of the provisions of this article or the terms and conditions of the planned unit development district approval, the commission shall issue a report of said violations to the city council. The city council shall hold a hearing on the reported violations submitted by the commission, having first given notice to the planned unit development district applicant and all owners of abiding property. Upon review of the alleged violations, the city council may, if it is deemed necessary, require that the appropriate action be taken to remedy the violations, amend or modify the planned unit development district or revoke approval. Introduced by Councilmember Velazquez, read in order published the seventh day of May two thousand and thirteen.
I will entertain a motion to set a hearing for May twenty-one, twenty thirteen and to approve the ordinance on first read.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Bolton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shu. Any questions from members of council? And seeing none, I think we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes. The next agenda item is eight J and that is to consider an agreement with Colorado, the Colorado Department of Local Affairs for participation in the best and brightest program. And Mr. Aker, I believe you will comment on this item.
Yes, I will. Good evening again, mayor and members of city council. I apologize in advance that we didn't bring this as a work session item, but I felt it was, we had discussed it periodically throughout the year. This is a, and we had to approve the grant request, so we've actually been awarded that grant, they've done the contracting, the contract has been through one review at the state level, then it comes back to city for city council to approve, so the mayor can sign, then it goes back to the state for final signature. So this is the actual award and the contract which allows us to have an intern. My plan is, well, it's Tara Marshall. She qualifies because she's going through the graduate program at University of Colorado Denver through their Masters of Public Administration program. She was not technically an employee of the city, she was employee of the state. She's had discussions with the state as far as her visitor center duties and with the DOLA and they agreed that this was a good, a good match. We will, she will continue to work with the visitor center, she'll continue to do the reports, but Carol Patrick-
Carol Patrick, yes.
-who is the assistant will be taking on a few additional duties working with the volunteers. What this does is it allows the city to have an intern for the next twenty-four months. That intern will be working in my office under my mentorship and the whole, the goal of the program is that a person gets real live experience to what I get to do on a day-to-day basis as they enter into their next step in the career, once they graduate and they want to become a city manager. What it provides the city additionally is some additional assistance in the city manager's office and other departments for special projects to allow us to get more done and really in this case, since we had the visitor center program, the city is already contributing funds to the visitor center program and we feel like within the next couple of years, as long as city council continues to fund that program, which I don't, in this case city council would not want to continue to fund the visitor center, we're actually getting a good bang for our bucks, so to speak, as far as giving some good assistance for the city manager's office. So without all inter any questions?
Any questions from the council? And if everything's in order, I will then entertain a motion to approve the agreement as presented.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Shu, second by Ms. Bolton. Last chance for any questions and seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes. The next agenda item is eight K and that is to consider transfer of ownership of a retail liquor store license request by Trinidad Beer, Liquor and Wine Depot LLC, doing business as Trinidad Beer, Liquor and Wine Depot located at one eleven East Kansas Avenue, formerly Kenneth R. Gagelman, doing business as Trinidad Beer, Liquor and Wine Depot. And Mr. Downs, is there any information you wish to share with us on this matter?
Madam Mayor, council, I just want to say, boy, there are a lot of liquor licenses in Trinidad and they're all coming up tonight. But just as it says, recommended city council action on your council communication, please just consider setting this matter for a hearing for the, for the transfer.
Can you just explain to me who's transferring what to who or is that more appropriate for the hearing?
Well, I would say that I'm kind of, I can absolutely do that.
We're serving the game last for temporary permits, I just wanted to ask.
Yes, Mr. Gagelman is in the bag.
Hallelujah.
Poor guy.
I think what you're doing, if I'm correct, is, bless your- You suffered here a little, you're transferring it from yourself individually to a limited liability corporation. Is that correct?
Yes.
I was supporting your first LLC, who's just, prior to it before?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.
Good question.
And the permit is related to what, because it takes time to do the transfer?
Yes.
Very good.
So far, those have all been good answers?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, thanks for stating that.
And Audra?
Yes.
What date do you propose for the hearing?
We can do this one as early as the twenty-first as well.
Okay, so that'd be May twenty-one, twenty thirteen. Therefore, if everything is in order, I will entertain a motion to set a hearing date for consideration of the transfer on May twenty-one, twenty thirteen. And motion by Ms. Miles, second by Ms. Velazquez. Any discussion or questions? And seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes. And don't give up on me now, we gotta pay the bills. The next agenda item is item number nine, the payment of bills. Are there any questions regarding the bills that were in your packet? And if there are none, I will entertain a motion to approve the payment of the bills.
I saw.
Motion by Mr. Benado, second by Ms. Velazquez. Any discussion? And we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes. The next agenda item is ten, that is the approval of payroll. May I have a motion to approve the payroll for the time period from April twenty-seven, twenty thirteen through May ten, twenty thirteen?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Bolton?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Shu. And any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Time is now nine forty-five and our meeting is adjourned and I really appreciate everything everybody did including hanging in for this long meeting. Good night.